This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
As you saw in your email on Friday, we have lots of detailed tables that Mr. Ritzens has put together. And we would like just a little bit of time to reflect on those tables and walk us through some of the data. I do have a proposal that I'll be handing out in the morning for our viewers tonight. And I do so, have some rationale and all, but I do so as a way to start the last part of this work and actually get to an ordinance. So once you listen to this data and Vicky Selson too, if you have data, you would like to add to our reading process. Then we'll get this proposal and show them that for a moment.
Thank you, Vice President. So just by way of background again, we do have a new council member since we last had a work session. We're going to have a specific proposal at this time. We were looking for direction from the city council regarding proposing wage ordinance before we start crafting. Now we haven't started any of the crafting at this point in time. The question for me to answer are which employees of any of the city of Eau Claire can be covered by living wage ordinance? What is the wage rate we want to use as a living wage? Whether or not our ordinance will apply to contracts that the city enters into with private entities? And whether or not it will cover financial assistance that we provide to private entities? The Wisconsin statutes do limit what living wage ordinance can cover. It's limited to employees of the city, service contracts that the city enters into, and work funded through financial assistance from the city. There are five jurisdictions in Wisconsin that I've been able to determine have living wage ordinances. The City of Madison, Dane County, City of Milwaukee, Milwaukee County, and Eau Claire County. We've had a good deal of discussion at this time about employees. Which employees should be covered under a living wage ordinance? And at the last work session, we talked about it quite a bit in terms of age of the employees and kind of looking at the part-time employees and what ages they were. A little different way of looking at it tonight, if you broke it down with several tables in this presentation, is to look at by how many hours these employees, the part-time employees, work for us. And group them into zero to 10 hours, 10 to 20, 20 to 30, and more than 30. Once you get to where your full-time employees are, you're going to talk about part-time employees here. And then the other way I wanted to break it, break that employee groups down is how long do they work for us? So I broke those down by less than three months, three months to six months, six to nine months, and nine to 12, nine to 12 months for throughout the course of the year. So we'll go through employees by those different groups. But if we look at our, look at our part-time employees, total between, the city has a total of 810 part-time employees, or at least that we had in 2000 and 2016, that number does vary. 525 of those were in administrative services, most of those are election workers. And we had a few others smattered throughout the organization, community services is the next highest group. Those get into our part-time recreation employees to a large extent. Health department at 33 and public library had 42. Now, the city council does not set pay and benefits for either the health department or the public library. So from this point forward, the numbers that I'm going to be talking about are going to be restricted to part-time employees that work within administrative services, city attorney, community development, community services. Because ultimately, it would be up to the library board and the city county health department board, whether or not they chose to enact the living wage ordinance. Within the city employees then, about 60%, 61% of our employees, of our part-time employees, work less than 10 hours when they work for, less than 10 hours per week when they work for us. So I would categorize those as truly, as truly part-time employees, excuse me. 72% of those, 60% of them are in administrative services. Almost 72% work less than 10 hours. About 20% work between 10 and 20 hours. So combined, about 92% of our part-time employees work less than 20 hours per week when they, when they work for us. If we look at those same employees by the number of months that they work for us, about 82% work for us for less than three months in the course of the year. Now that, that's not necessarily three consecutive months. It would be spread out throughout the course of the year. But nevertheless, you know, less than, less than three months throughout the course of the year. Another 10% work for us for between three and six months. So once again, about 90, nearly 92% of our employees, of our part-time employees, work for us for less than six months out of the, out of the calendar year. Yep?
Say there's an employee that is both, just for example, like an election worker and a community service worker in the summer. Would those two, would the hours from those two roles be combined in this, okay? It's by person, not by actual job?
Yeah, I look at it by, by person. So go ahead. Any, any part-time job that they go, that they have with the city will be included in these hours.
Jay, can I ask a question?
Yeah?
What, what, how can we understand what sort of work are they doing? Like if they're working less than three months, are they doing a job that's easier? Or, you know, is, is the work that they're doing all relatively the same in terms of how difficult it is? And what sort of skill level it takes across?
Well, almost 65% of these, of these folks are election, are poll workers.
I mean, for folks who aren't poll workers in the administrative? Is their work relatively the same regardless of rank at the time? That they're working with amount of hours?
I mean, I can, I can, you know, I can certainly dive into detail on what the specific job titles are. Although, although that doesn't even help because in a lot of areas, it's called temporary, temporary four, temporary. So we don't even, I don't even know exactly what it is. But within the recreation division, you know, certainly you have, you have lifeguards that are within that, you know, temporary category.
Three months?
Yeah, which are probably work less than, you know, less than three months out of the year. Many of them are working less than 20 hours per week because you maintain that flexibility. Now, do they have the same level of responsibility as somebody who's working in concession stand? Probably not. I mean, there is a higher level of responsibility, it's my opinion. Being a lifeguard, you need to be certified and trained to do that. And you're, you know, responsible for making sure kids are safe in the, in the pool. But it's a lot of that same, a lot of that same, same type of work, at least within the, within the recreation area, whether that's at Hobbs, or at our ice skating raves during the winter, or at pools during the summer, or, you know, working in the recreation program. So that's really a lot of the, you know, a lot of the folks that we're, that we're talking about. So the next thing I did was I kind of combined those two, those two concepts into, into a single table. And said, you know, what, for example, what percent of our employees work for us for less than three months out of the year? And work for, work less than 10 hours per week when they work for us? And about 66% of the people fall into that, that category. So generally, they work for us for a relatively short period of time. And they work relatively few hours when they, when they do work, work for us. And so again, this provides, I think, a pretty, to me at least, a pretty interesting breakdown of our employees and, and the duration of their employment with us during the calendar year, and how many hours they're, they're working for us. But you can see that, you know, certainly a majority of our employees fall into, into this, this category of they, they're working for us for less than three months out of the year and working for us for less than, less than 20 hours when they're, when they're working for us. So this, these are the percentages. And the table below just breaks it down by the actual numbers of employees rather than just percentages. Because percentages can be deceiving sometimes, you don't know how many total you're talking about. So again, most of the employees fall into that, that category. We don't have very many employees where we're talking about that, that work for us for, you know, more than 30 hours. And period. You know, that's a very small group of people that, that work for us for over 30 hours. So this is, this is the primary question that we grappled with for the last work session and never received any specific direction. And that is wish city of Eau Claire employees should be covered by a living wage ordinance? That was Vice President.
So I said that I have, a conversation starter. Um, Terry, what do you want to do? This proposal answers all the, all four questions that were posed to us last time. So just go through one bit slow. She goes. So the proposal is, as a conversation starter, to amend the part-time pay, or to amend the pay plan for part-time employees. Do you guys make one?
Yeah. No, one more.
Okay, sorry. To amend the pay plan for part-time employees of the city. So we've answered one question in this proposal. We're only talking about employees who work for the city, not contractual services or, uh...
Economic development.
I, I guess, just, I think we're wrong here, so economic, but for tip-type projects. That's one answer. Who work more than 20 hours per week and at least three months a year. To adjust the starting salary to $12.27 an hour. I've heard through Vicky Selson that part-time employees do have a tier in schedule that arises just like our full-time employees do on the basis of supervisor time and supervisor evaluation. They also have a tier in schedule of expected raises. This amendment would start that tier at $12.25 an hour. So below, there's a little rationale. First rationale is that the city must compete to attract employees as the labor market tightens. One might be surprised to learn that the labor market is tightening. But if one reads the news, uh, one could see that there are various and reliable sources that say that because of retirements, because of smaller families, maybe even immigration policy, that our labor market in the next five, six years is a tightening market. I read in an economist blog, just because I do, I'm not sure why I did that though. Elliot Eisenberg is the chief economist in some consulting firm, but also with the National Association of Home Builders and a speaker nationwide in all. This blog just today said that the labor market is being tightened as our unemployment rate hit 4.4%, its lowest level since April of '07. Its lowest level since April of '07. And the lowest readings since '12 of '07. A participation rate for, for the labor force participation rate still held steady. And other markers indicate that we are at full employment. The only disappointment though, he goes on to say, is that year-over-year wage growth remains very weak at 2.5% year-over-year wage growth. I believe in my state of the city address, I quoted, uh, that one. I hope I remember the statistics right, but the lower quintile of the population as far as wage earnings gained about 3% of wealth in their wealth, if you measure personal wealth. While the upper quintile gained, do you remember what I said? 20, 25%. So the, there's, the message is that the lower quintile is not rising. Their, their earnings are not rising at the same level as the higher quintile. Furthermore, Mr. Eisenberg reports that retail sales jumped or slumped in March, with their worst performance since 2012. And he suggests that this is that because retailers are having a hard time raising prices due to weak consumer demand, she attributes to a weak real wage growth. Our own Don Comte said that she considers she will have to pay lifeguards more in the coming year just to fill positions as her, her supply is weakening for lifeguards. When we, I don't think lifeguards work more than 20 hours a week, but. So all, all of those arguments go to try to back up the notion that we do have to compete to attract employees as, as an employer, as a public entity in the city. We have, going to have to do our own measures to compete for a tightening labor market. Secondly, it's also important to realize that retaining employees, just like with any business, is a better use of resources than, than attracting. You can retain people who demonstrate an interest and aptitude for public sector work. But that is better for your organization to have people who demonstrate that they like the work and they're capable of doing that. So that is why the proposal includes people who work more than 20 hours a week and at least three months a year. That means that a supervisor would have been able to evaluate the person's work and they would have been able to evaluate whether they like the work. And that could, could lead to a value-long-term employee. So I think that is a rationale for the proposal as laid out before you. And thirdly, a person who works 20 hours a week could combine this one job with just one other job, or maybe a spouse's job, to make a 40-hour-a-week job. And that way, you're not working 60 or 80 hours a week. You're combining your resources, you're working 40 hours a week. You still have the quality of life, of time for some leisure perhaps, or childcare, or walking your dog. And so we're not, we're helping people not work more than 40 hours a week, or not exorbitant number of hours a week. And lastly, the $12.27 an hour reflects the wage that is recommended in the self-sufficiency standard for Wisconsin. This report has been put together by a woman researcher out of the University of Washington since 1997 or '04, I think. And now 36 states in the nation contract with her metrics to publish or support a self-sufficiency report in their state. And we just did one, Wisconsin has done three of them in '98, '04, and '16. So in this report, which was in the PowerPoint that Jay sent to you, $12.27 an hour is a self-sufficiency wage for two adults in Eau Claire County. The report breaks down the whole state by county. And the self-sufficiency wage differs by, differs by county. The self-sufficiency report's goal is to help people live without government assistance. The report makes it very clear that the authors do not disagree with using government assistance when people need it. That would be Tanneth and Blue Stamps and McCade. And in our community, going to the free clinic and, and things like that. While they don't disagree, but that's an important component of being a moral society. This standard helps policymakers and people measure their own, like a goal, make a goal for themselves as far as what would it take to live without government assistance. In somewhat, sort of, you know, stand-up kind of thing, I guess. So having read her report and reviewing her metrics, I, I felt that they were solidly put together. I feel like it's an honest reflection of what it would take for two adult family to make it. And that if we, we can amend our, our living, our part-time pay plan thus, that we would be helping about 55 people somewhat would be affected immediately. It would not be, uh, you know, break our game. It would thus retain, recruit, and be a normal thing to do. That's the sort of skeleton of that. You'll notice that it doesn't include contractual workers or financial assistance, people we give financial assistance to. And it only would affect people who work more than 20 hours, at least 20 hours and more than three months for the same. And I believe the estimated cost of such a proposal is about $40,000. Of this proposal.
Forty dollars?
About $40,000.
Can I write down a little sense of...
I believe that it really varies the, from what...
The temporary pay plan has steps for, there's a part-time facility that has a wage rate that goes between $8 and $10 an hour. There's a separate wage rate for some election officials. Then there's a temporary one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. And it goes from seven, 15 hours, and then by a dollar, if you move off the question.
Could I ask two on that? If I remember correctly, when we did the wage study, you know, two or three years ago, did we, I don't believe we amended that pay plan. We left it as it was.
But we, in the very beginning of our work sessions, we found out that our full-time employees are not affected by a living wage ordinance as presented. So that's why we're focusing on our time. And also, I was surprised to learn that outside of the poll workers and some of the, the summer employees in that department, the rest of the part-time people already make at least $12.27 or quite a bit more than that. So we were talking about growing up jobs last time. Those people, that those positions are already, it's a big thing to be...
I, I, go ahead.
I'm wondering, in, I've expressed an interest the last few meetings about incorporating folks who are not full-time employees into our insurance benefits. And I'm wondering if this would include, folding that into, that benefit in for folks who fit this criteria of 20 hours per week, at least three months of the year?
I did not envision, envision that as, I guess I concentrated on a wage proposal and not a wage and benefit proposal. Though we, I guess we could try to be more creative. I think Tim has suggested an educational step and there's some other creative ways to support our employee group. I, I don't know the, the impact of negotiating a new health insurance package for, in which part-time employees could buy. And then what would, would be our cost or the employees' cost?
I think related to that, my, I, I agree that combining one's wages with another person's wages could help satisfy what they need, with the exception that most people count on having some type of health insurance. And so if people are bringing this, you know, 40-hour paycheck home, but one-fourth or 30% of it is going to healthcare insurance, that significantly changes their income and their quality of life.
Yeah.
That's a concern.
I certainly understand the country is talking very seriously about what to do about healthcare costs on both the supplier and the demand side. We work in the supply side and we're talking about it too. One, what to do. I didn't feel, although I didn't ask Jay in particular if he could work out some sort of way we could offer, I don't know, we didn't even talk about that. But it would be economically feasible for the person or the city, I don't know. But you're right, Catherine, covering your, your health insurance is, is a big concern. I think Andrew is, or I think David was before both of you.
Dave's next. All right. I, I just want to say, I, of course, you know, I'm not a fan of this necessarily, but I appreciate you putting this together to sort of quantify things for us and make it a little bit easier. And so we have like at least a basis to go. So I do appreciate that. I actually sort of agree with you on a couple of your rationales as well. You know, that we must compete to attract employers as, and I think the labor market is tightening. I've seen it out there in the private sector trying to hire people. We have to, we have to pay more. So I agree with all that. I, I just disagree with the conclusion on it, that, that elected officials should be setting, setting the wage for part-timers. I think we, we hire professional managers, we've got human resources directors, finance directors, that they have to pay the wage that it's required to get and keep these people, just like you're saying here. And, and they will make those decisions based on the labor market. And I guess I, that's where I would disagree. I think I, I trust the staff to, to take care of this so we can keep a good, good workforce.
But you know that we do approve the pay plan.
For everyone.
For everyone. But the pay plan is presented to us and we assume that, you're saying that the staff has, has said, okay, this person, this job gets $8.50 an hour, and that's, that's a good wage.
Well, I'm saying that, that according to what I just heard from Vicky here, that we have a, we have a, our pay plan is approved already. We have, we, we start out anywhere from $7.50 up to $14 something an hour. And staff has the leeway right now currently to pay more if, if they feel they need to do that to get and retain good people. So I think we already have, that's what I guess what I'm saying, so.
I guess I would just second call.
Are we? Oh, sorry. As far as, as far as I understand, and thank you, Kerry, for putting this together too. But as far as I understand, we, we still approve the pay, the pay plan as it is, you know, even for part-time. So those, that comes, you know, that, that was up to us whether or not to raise it three years ago. We ended up not for part-time folks. But, you know, I think that the rationale on the amount is something that, you know... But, you know, I think that the rationale on the amount is something that, you know, could make sense, I think. And thank you for doing the research on this. I think where I, where I run into some issues with this is that, you know, I guess I, we talked about lifeguards and the importance of that job, even if it's ten or fifteen hours a week. And, you know, wanting to make sure that we're paying all of our employees, you know, a living wage is more in line with where the county is, and I think there's something to be said for that. But I think too, that the assumption here is essentially that, you know, if they're working less than twenty hours, that they're working another job that also pays living wage, which is an assumption that I'm not sure that we can make necessarily. And given, especially in our town, there's many jobs that are under twelve-twenty-seven in retail and et cetera. So that's one of the concerns. I think the other concern would be for me is, and something to think about is how this is indexed. Because most living wage ordinance is think about inflation over time and how to work on that. So that would be another thing to just kind of throw in there. But I think my preference would be if we could extend, if we could extend it to all, to all wage earners in our city. And I still haven't heard the argument why poll workers opt to not make an increased amount, but I'm open to that argument, I suppose, if people, if people have that. So that's sort of my initial reaction.
I don't know if the self-sufficiency report indexes itself. Do you remember?
Other than I want to redo the, redo the study. Recalibrate it, recalibrate itself, but I don't know how often that study is redone for the state of Wisconsin. But there are certain ways that, there are certain ways that you could index it.
Yeah, we do for full-time employees, we have a CPI, because it's costly.
As Don County, I assume that she pretty much filled all positions for the Black Paris for this council.
I don't know. I think it's still in process.
Do we have enough applicants for the jobs that we have? Or are we looking for applicants?
I think, I mean, I think the applications are coming in and I haven't heard that we don't have a supply of them.
Was that specific to lifeguards or in general?
My question?
Yes.
When we have, I guess it was specific to lifeguard. But if we have a part-time position open, how many applicants do we typically get?
For the most part, we don't have trouble getting applications for our positions. Anecdote, and Council President is absolutely correct. Don, I've had conversations of her desire to increase wage rate for recreation. She intends to do that within her existing budget, but she's not talking about twelve, twelve, it's only talking about maybe ten, ten-fifty an hour. Anecdotally, high school kids are turning their nose up a little bit at eight-fifty an hour for lifeguarding because they have to get certified and there's a cost to doing that and that level of responsibility. So I think that is, that position in particular is kind of on that, you know, on that edge at this point in time.
See, if that's the way the labor market is moving, regardless of paid for the high school college or whatever, retiree, like someone. If the well goes dry in terms of applicants, then we have to, and the marketplace dictates that we're going to have to pay more, you're right. It would seem that the mechanism is there for that to happen. I mean, it calms me a little bit that we're talking with give or take fifty of our employees. So this is going to be as significant as I thought it was going to be. I, it, it... What about, what about the people that pay the taxes? We can't go out and tax more. So how many, how many temporary part-time people are we not going to be able to hire? We have to start paying forty or fifty thousand dollars more to the ones that work more than twenty hours a week. And, I don't know, let's say it's four or five people, maybe ten, I don't know. But there are going to be, I'm thinking that there are going to be five to ten jobs fewer not being filled in our parks and in our pool and at the pods and other facilities that we have. And the people that pay the taxes are not going to get, we're getting pinched out of it. But who's speaking for them?
Well, I do want to, yeah, I think you're right, but my philosophy has, has been that I would like to pay fewer people more. I'd like to pay fewer people a living wage rather than paying a lot of people a lot of money. I think that's maybe a philosophical difference. You're right, there would be fewer people and there might be fewer services. And maybe the pool isn't open as much as it has been in the past. But I would choose that. Also, when the people, the people we're going to be paying this wage should also pay taxes. They're not non-taxpaying people. So, and a higher wage, I think people don't oftentimes talk enough about demand bubbling up from the bottom. As far as if you have a little bit more income or maybe a lot more income, you circulate in the economy and there's the multiplier effect. They, they don't, you know, people on a low wage don't just sit on their money, they also spend it in our economy and they pay taxes. And maybe, maybe afford a little bit of childcare or something. There is a philosophical difference in the room and we respectfully, you know, acknowledge that in each other. The proposal began as a very modest thing, modest statement for our city to make, or some kind of statement for our city to make as far as. People who work for our city do not make less than a self-sufficiency standard wage. We'll pay them less if you work three hours a week.
You know, Carrie, I like what you put together. I think it puts a good framework. I do like when we separate out one thing and we look at cost of services. We could, on any item, we just took bids and we're looking at some construction, we do that constantly. We could really seek out a lower and lower bidder and save dollars. And maybe the concrete isn't as thick, but it'll probably work. You know, do you really need four inches? What about three and seven-eighths and then keep going down? I do like pulling this out of the whole concept of living wage. We are, we have taxes from houses and property. That's our lion's share. So by definition, we're going to be limited to what we can do. We won't be able to answer, I believe, all the healthcare, transportation, child, every issue. Because we don't have those dollars to give. And our core, if we look at the statute, is to provide for the functioning of the city. That is why a city is incorporated and can assess taxes and receive taxes. So when I look at this, I think it's nice to, and I do want to respect what was brought up earlier. While we approve the pay plans, we have not had the history of micromanaging and changing. No, I think this one grade level should get this and I think this job title should get this. We take it as a package, we ask for due diligence and the staff does a well job of getting that research or viability. Am I responsible for my neighbor and to what extent is the question? And so in this, I see a call that says, the way you framed it, puts it in a functional dollar amount to be able to do. We've had numbers from four hundred grand to a million. And just as we don't know whether they're working other jobs, we also know this may be all they want to work. There's a wide variety. I mean, people may be retired, they may only want to work part-time so they can watch their kids, whatever. We don't know their whole demographic. But, so I could see this two ways. This could be a strong suggestion to staff to say, we really think this should be the bottom pay. And that would be saying, this is what the city represents. I really think we've got something about attraction. That is very true. There's many forces I'll add in there. It has been the greatest, we call it the grain of America, there's just not the workers. There were not the births the last twenty, thirty years ago to replace the births of the families of five and ten children. Now there's twos and threes and ones and nuns. So there's multiple forces, but I'm warming to this idea because we put it in a box that I think the city budget can live with. It, like all things, doesn't deliver everything that we might think might be on a list. But respectfully, we've seen the budget and we know we just don't have it. So if we were to go to the Cadillac Plan or the largest thing, we would be saying, how many of this division are we getting rid of? Are we going to have our own, and I don't want to name any divisions, but are we going to use the county or state division for this? We'd have to be giving up something because there's just no dollars to come from. So while we do make investments with our dollars, but we are limited to where we can put those due to statutes and other things. I'm thinking this might be a good recommendation and I may go so far to, we'll see where it goes, to support it to, whether we make that or the city office itself just says, hey, this is a good number. So I appreciate your work and...
Yeah, I wasn't, maybe this was already answered, but I wasn't entirely clear if the wage rises with, is it, has it been considered that the wage would rise with inflation and that sort of thing?
Yeah, you can talk about the steps.
We've got the steps, I think you were asking about the indexing question and, and it, you know, it certainly could. If that was the desire of council to have that wage rate change on a periodic basis.
The part-time pay plan now does have a step one.
But our pay plan, just to be clear, does not automatically increase for inflation for CPI. Our CPI across the long basis don't apply to, currently apply to our part-time pay plan.
Does it apply to the full-time?
For the part-time, our practice has been probably every minimum of two, sometimes three years. And we'll adjust them. Particularly with those rate, wage rates, you know, instead of eight dollars, having it go, you know, eight-twenty-three or something like that. Every two or three years you'll come back and say, well, again, our parents are going to be eighteen, eleven, fifteen, whatever. So we have adjusted the temporary pay plan as a whole, you know, to keep it moving. But it doesn't automatically, it comes, you know, periodically from a set recommendation.
So I, speaking to that, I do generally like this idea of working off of this plan that we found. I'd actually really like to page through it and see what it says. I would be a little bit worried about not incorporating some sort of, you know, account for inflation and how the poverty might change and that sort of thing, seeing that the thing isn't updated very, all frequently. I also wanted to speak to a couple of other things. Generally, I feel okay about the fact that this would only apply to folks that are working for us three months or longer and not those who are under three months. Of course, I think it's probably, doesn't come to a shot to anybody that I would like to see this a little bit more inclusive, but that one is, that was, that's one that I could live with certainly. I, like, Councilmember Worthman said, I would like to see more consideration for folks who are working under twenty hours a week. Being, you know, even though they're people who maybe are piecing together employment opportunities to piece together a full-time job, maybe they aren't. And particularly, people who are, you know, under the age of twenty-five, under the age of eighteen even, are working to invest in their education and their future. And I think that they definitely deserve some consideration there as well. I'd also like to, well, I'd like to at some point consider insurance and education as well. But I think that this may be a good idea to, to consider one thing at a time. And I like that we kind of pieced it out, you know, with the wage and everything like that. And then lastly, I'd really like to, I would really like to see contractual workers being considered under our living wage ordinance as well. And signance of assistance, as we called them. You know, these are people that are, that we're accountable for as well. And there are people in our, in our city that are doing our work and I think that they definitely deserve to have a wage that will sustain a quality of life. So I guess those are my things that I'd like to see. But I'm glad that we came to, you know, one kind of proposal that we can work off of. And lastly, I'd like to bring up the point that this proposal, though it may not be addressing a lot of people's jobs, it does make the market as a whole more competitive. It makes, obviously it makes us more competitive as an employer, but it makes the market more competitive and kind of sends a message to the private sector that, that people are going to be expecting higher wages. We've seen that in the county as well. And so, you know, I think that setting this standard is really important to all people living within our city, even those that we're not employing. So I'm really glad to see that we have been able to come to some sort of starting point.
Starting point?
You know, I'd like to just add some other perspectives. You know, these are tough things. Our resources, again, come from property taxes. We would like more and that's not something we get to move up on our own. Some people I know, they're builders, they've had construction crews for quite a few years and it's very competitive. They're out of business. They paid very well. We wouldn't pay enough for our houses or our buildings or our concrete or whatever they were building. We said, no, that's, we wanted the best buy. So while we can think about the idea of saying it would be great if we added this and added this, we have to look on that income side. So for that builder, there just wasn't the profit margin to be made to cover. And they went backwards and cities that are going bankrupt. We have to be careful that we don't put in certain things we're tied to that we can't support. So we've got to be, I like this as a start, but other things. And then we also have to sometimes reverse and I do hear all the points that are said. But I may, you know, we may have somebody who's choosing just to get out to work fifteen hours a week. Our economy, any economy, world economy, works on full-time employment. There's just no... There's just no way to make part-time always fit everything. The goal is to, and that's where the idea of training, developing, getting people are interested in civil work and then seeing them grow into full-time positions. So part-time by definition, our goal is, is a transition from beginning to full. But we can never satisfy that entire full-time benefit if the workers stay in the part-time. We have to build stepping stones. We have to have those, but we're never going to be funded. And then it's self-referenced. One person's part-time is different than another and different than another. So is it 40 hours, 39, 38, 12, 4, 3, and I get to ridiculous and not consulting, just saying that there is a scale of value for work. And a certain amount of work will produce something. So I agree that there's an idea saying, hey, we should give this. This is a new idea. We've only got, what, four or five areas in the state doing this? So this is not a, we're not behind the lead. We're not an embarrassment to the world. We are looking forward when we look at this proposal. But we're doing good here. So I would really, if, if we decide to move this forward, and maybe that's a question I'll ask if we want to ever have another living wage discussion or we close it, but I think if, I like not putting words in your mouth. But when it comes in one piece at a time, I think that's our best way to proceed. If we move the bottom pay to this, then we have a separate one if we add something else. So that's just what I wanted to add to for the discussion.
Hopefully, we'll contemplate next steps tonight and maybe we're done with the discussion and we're ready for the next, debating on the floor.
Yeah, again, I'm jumping in the middle here, but I like the problems that are set. I think it's a good starting point. I think it covers the areas that we need. I think, you know, it's hard for the people that are creating a successful project realizing right now, you know, it's difficult for them to afford to live in the city that they're creating successes that we're realizing right now, that, you know, that I don't think we're doing. It's our responsibility. I think rents are going up, home prices are going up, and pensions going up only because we're doing well. As was mentioned, there are only four or five cities that are presently doing this. But I would argue that there's probably only four or five cities that are prospering like we have two. I think we're successful right now and I think if we're continuing, then that trend will continue. So I think it's important that if we're relying on them to make us better and to grow, then they should go to work.
So maybe if I can, I don't think we have motions when you have a kid. But I'd like to suggest we consider moving this to an ordinance discussion as is. Maybe that's the way to segue into what's the next step.
I think that when I, when I talk about what you can change, you can have a really good idea of there's, is the insurance working? So I think we might have, anyway, there would be some help constructing an ordinance.
Offer.
Yeah, offering the ordinance. I think that we might be ready to construct an ordinance and take it to the council floor. Do you both think that?
Take a poll of them.
We, we can offer still input and amendments on, or more learning about the health insurance, please.
So I'll, I'll say forward traction is better than no traction, so for sure. And for whatever it's worth, for me, I, I think about all the things I get to enjoy. And it's kind of like, when you get to be on city council, it's almost like working at your favorite restaurant. And you get to see what goes on behind the scenes and then you learn more. Unfortunately, at this restaurant, I want to keep eating here. It's a good one. It's a really, really good one. And when I learn that behind the scenes, that some people aren't able to make ends meet and are not, cannot tap into the same benefits that all other employees, most other employees get, that weighs heavily on me. And I think about, you know, my family and what we get to enjoy in the city. And if I know that I'm doing it on the backs of somebody else or somebody else has to be totally broke because I get pleasure of going to a park for an hour, that seems wrong to me. I don't feel good about that. And so that's why this is so important to me. Beyond, you know, looking at a salary that's, it's better. To me, I'd rather tell my family, you know, we're, you don't get to go to the pool for X amount of hours like we did before, but people can make their ends meet. Or make, is that right? Did I say that right? Okay. So it's really, it really is important to me because I think if we don't square this up, then we're, we're having pleasure at the sake of somebody else's demise. And I don't feel good about that personally. So yes, yes, I would support moving this forward in the conversation. And I guess what would, what would it take to formalize a request from staff to look at insurance options like we talked about last time?
Before you answer that, I disagree with, I, I think it's a good idea. We do it at the health department. Part-time people are part of the health insurance plan. It's prorated based on FDP and it is limited to half-time or whatever. I don't think we should mix these two. I think we should settle this and that will tell us who is in danger and then, and then we should go to the health insurance. And I would, I would support looking at that, but not till we, till we fix on who we're talking about. I disagree with Andrew. I could not support including everybody. I, I would support this kind of ordinance. But I think we need to settle that before we start looking at benefits.
As we look at our health insurance renewal, we may expand that.
Yeah, it's not so much the renewal. It would be just, we have to define a benefit plan. So we have a benefit ordinance and we can modify that ordinance to say who's a good.
Right. I guess I'm hearing that we're ready and we need to ask staff what needs to be amended.
I think as, Victoria, may I mention, there is a, we will be having an intern in the legal department. I'm not sure when that individual starts. Is it June, June 1st?
Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Tuesday after Memorial Day. So I think that this would, I think Steve was planning on tasking this individual drafting the ordinance. So it'll be sometime, sometime this summer that we would bring it back.
Counselor, originally, myself and Councilmember Emanuel contacted the staff about this issue and asked to get the ball rolling on it for a living wage ordinance. And I guess as it stands, I wouldn't want my name on that, on that proposal. Whoever's name is, I don't know, but I, I don't feel like it's in keeping with my original sharing of the county's work and my hope that we would go in the same direction as the county. So I guess my name wouldn't be on it.
Yeah, so that's with this process of the pre-legislative work session, essentially you're providing that direction and feedback for research and then drafting ordinance. And maybe just come back to your agenda, we would present it, it wouldn't be one or another. Unless, I guess it's a little different. You brought this forward, so I don't.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
But we, I would certainly respect that you don't want to be the author of this.
This would be a staff, this would be a staff recommended ordinance then? It'd be a response to our group.
Yeah, this, this would be, we would draft the ordinance based on feedback or receiving this work session and just present it for you to debate and amend, you know, go up and down. This is intended to give us some guidance on, you know, a platform that we can build in ordinance that you then can do your discussion in the legislative room versus a, you know, a whole session.
And would it still be possible if myself and another council member were interested in substitute ordinance to have that crafted as well? Similar to what we did with the wellhead ordinance, where we had a substitute?
I, that seems like a division of the house to me.
Yeah, then maybe we shouldn't have moved this forward at all.
Yeah, that's what we were.
We're either together or we're not ready to go.
We do allow that in our ordinance, in our charter ordinance for two council members to bring.
Yes, we do. But then all these work sessions that we've been are nothing. We didn't use them to learn and compromise from each other.
It's also not to task the city with a large activity. So while two can bring it together, it's not to expel great resources on the staff.
It certainly, we can't, as you know, no one has the power to stop two council members from bringing anything forward that's in our ordinance, you know. And you can command staff time in so doing. It might be, it might be more collegial if you considered amendments to the ordinance once written that you would like to amend it, to, to drop the hours words to 10 or anybody. And maybe you could get it that way.
Or, and what about the, and the same for the addition of contractual workers?
Yeah, you could perhaps offer.
You could do the amendment process of.
Be a little bit more collegial. Maybe then you'll have three amendments that night. We are off. Once, once we see how this is written, then we can work on.
Okay.
So we could amend it to death, which would, in essence, we end up with a different ordinance. If we made the amendments.
Or none. Or none at all.
The wellhead ordinance might have been a little bit, I think.
Yeah. That was, that was a pretty thing for us.
Can I go back to the question that I asked? What, how can we, if there is enough interest, to formalize maybe a directive or a formalized request for staff to prepare alternatives or options for addressing some of the insurance concerns? And I asked that because I thought we talked about that last time and it was, yep, we'll bring back some options and I don't see any options. So I'm wondering how then do we formalize it so that the communication and follow-through, as we mutually understand it, is there?
So Catherine, would you be satisfied with a sort of general statement of if it's possible, what would it look like? If it's possible to offer health insurance to part-time employees, what, what would that, what are the fiscal ramifications of that? So we're, so could we take a stab at answering a tiny bit of that question?
Well, I think the discussion is somewhat, in my mind, at least somewhat similar to the discussion we can have with wage ordinance. Is it possible? Yes, it's possible. What are the, what are going to be the parameters? What's that, what's that box look like? Are we offering them family coverage? Are we offering them single coverage? How are we, we can do it similar, and I don't know the specifics of the health department. We can do it similar to, similar to how the health department handles it. But the cost is going to be dependent upon a lot of different factors. So until, if I can nail some of those down, it's a little bit of a moving target, a little bit of a target for us as far as estimating for financial factors.
So it might have to be a subsequent motion, a subsequent action. Can you be satisfied with that somewhat comfortable?
Generally, you're going to say.
I was just going to say, I mean, because it does sound like the health department does something. We could cost, you know, we could cost that. What would the cost of what the health department does do if applied to the employee that we're talking about here that was working more than 20 hours, more than three months out of the calendar year?
Let's do that as a starting point. I think that seems a reasonable thing, that is comparable in the organization.
I have sort of the same issue because I would like to have, if this is the ordinance, I'd like to amend to a pre-contractual. But I don't want to get it to the council floor and then everyone to say, well, we don't know what that costs. I can't vote on your amendment. So I don't know what to do about that because I would like us to consider that.
I think it has a cost proposal.
Do we already have that?
Oh, yeah, we have a cost as well.
I think it's somewhere in.
It's in the neighborhood.
It's in the neighborhood of $200,000.
Okay.
We have one large.
Is that Aviand?
Yeah, that's a far away our single largest, single largest contract. Oh, yeah, you know, it'll vary a little bit depending on how a threshold you use.
Yeah, and it's a contract and it comes up for renegotiation.
But that's, that's going to be the, that's the big one.
Okay.
And, and.
Now, just a question on something like that. When you say that and we tell a contracted service, you need to move this up. Do we ask the same thing we're asking? Can they afford to pay their people that? Or do they have to get rid of vehicles and stop serving? Or, or can they raise their rates?
It would happen, the way it was implemented by the county is it was when the contract came due. So you can't, you can't force them to do that mid-contract. So when the contracts came due, when the county solicited proposals, they sent out that RFP with what the minimum wage rate was.
I see. So then it's within there?
Yeah, exactly. And then firms submitted proposals based upon, based upon that.
Based on knowing that cost basis.
Exactly.
Doesn't, does Aviand's contract with the county, are they already making?
Yes, they do contract with the county.
So would there be any, if they're already contract, if they're already contractually obligated to be paying living wage to the county, would that be?
That only applies to the county.
So they have, so they would be paying?
So when an employee is working on a county contract, they're making a living wage. When an Aviand employee is working under a contract for somebody else, they're not making that same wage rate.
Okay.
Yeah, we're ready? Is there any feelings like, can I have a discussion, respectful discussion? And what's the latest debate?
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912 or TDD 715-839-1689. Or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.